Let's pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Hello, fellow members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Kim Trombley.
Yeah.
Trustee Greg Martin.
Here.
Trustee Steve Southwick.
Here.
Trustee Amy Garrett.
Here.
This time I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. We now have the public comment period. We have representatives from the mayor's car here. Would you like guys, would you like to go first again?
Sure, sure, that'd be great. I'm Matt Cooper, from the mayor's car. I think a few of you were at the Town of Champlain, Village of Rousen Point, meeting that we've had earlier this year, recognized for this larger basis. With me is Joe Hawley, who just started working for our firm this fall. He's actually covering a water and sewer project we have in Westport, but he's based out of Plattsburg and maybe stopping by time to time, gathering data and working on these projects that we've had in this area. So I wanted to bring you with me tonight so that you have a chance to meet him. But just a little background, we've been working for the Town of Champlain, I guess, for probably a little over a year now. Initially looking at Route 11 Water District, and following that, they had interest in some other projects, the West Service Road and South Street. And then that, we had some coordination with the village. If those projects were to happen, it would require coordination with the village and connection of water and sewer utilities. And then through those discussions, Woody had mentioned that there were some concerns that the village had about your own utilities and possible future projects. So, yeah, I was asked to prepare a proposal, and I hope that most of you have had a chance to read that by now. Backs it up, I don't know if you have had an opportunity to read that.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
Your correspondence should be.
No?
No. I didn't see it.
I brought it in the office to be copied to everybody when you faxed it to me.
Well, it's okay, we'll review it.
Sure, sure. But I can just touch on the highlights here for you. Couple of the concerns that Woody expressed to me when we met earlier this summer was, first, water quality, and second, water storage. The tank and the water quality, the high iron and possible hardness problems, were a couple of things he expressed concern upon and would want us to look at in doing the study. And the water storage thing kind of goes hand in hand with the town's projects, and I think that's one of the reasons we contacted those companies to talk about that, because that it wouldn't make sense to have us involved with that because we're already working with the town and those projects may go hand in hand. So, I did prepare a proposal based on doing a study and report on those, and also, you know, looking at funding scenarios through that. And what we did have here would be a fee that would be based on hourly rate, not exceed $4,500. And like I said, that would include study of those two issues, preparing a report for it that could be submitted to the funding agencies, and coordination with Department of Health on those projects, and also with the funding agencies. I'm sure you have some questions.
Yeah, well, I guess this is our first step, is this what we need to do now? You know, we would like to continue to provide service for expansion, you know, in the village and outside the village, and we feel that, you know, some of these water pressure issues, quality issues are going to hold us back, and we most certainly don't want that to happen, so I guess we're looking at moving forward to see where we can go with this. Options are available. We're, you know, working with the town and the village of Rousen Point, we're trying to come up with ways of doing these things the way they make sense. You know, we have kind of a patchwork now, we've added districts here, districts there, never really planned for tying things back in, looping and things like that, and we need to address those issues if we're to continue to expand and broaden our service.
And with the new border crossing facilities, although I have heard them mention that that will cause no further water demand on your system, or no further sewer loading, it's hard to believe that many millions of dollars are being spent up there and there won't be any more water flowing back and forth.
Well, we want to take that into account.
Yeah, exactly. So there definitely are some things to plan for at this point. And the funding picture seems to get worse, you know, year by year. Rural Development, who does most of the grant funding for the sewer projects, has made it known that they knew that no single project would be funded more than half a million dollars. If you're looking at a two or three or four million dollar project, you know, that component would be 25 percent or less, your project, and quite often that would make a project unaffordable at that point. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is usually a major component of a water project grant fund, is still there, still available. There's a scoring system involved with that to qualify, basically the way it works. The summary is, the more problems you have, the higher your score, and the higher your priority for getting funding across the state. But like I said, you know, those communities that turned down projects five and 10 years ago, when there was 75, 80 percent funding, many of them are regretting that decision because the picture's getting to 70 percent, 60 percent, 50 percent grant funding all the time. Monies are being made out elsewhere, across the country, and now around the world with hurricanes and wars, so it gets tougher and tougher each year.
Yeah, well, Amy and I met with the state a couple of weeks ago, and they're telling us like 10 percent of the grants are all that are being approved at this point. It gets worse and worse as time goes by, it doesn't look like it's going to get a whole lot better real soon.
Not in immediate future, yeah. If you want time to take a look at this, or to think about it further, you know, I can get you additional copies of these if you don't have them, of our proposal, but if it's something that you're fairly certain you want to go forward for, I can prepare an agreement for services and mail that up to you this week.
Yeah, well, as Amy and I found out at that meeting, that's the next step, you really can't go any further without doing a study. The thing we are looking at is doing this in conjunction with the town, so we do want to look at that funding option also, but that's where we're headed next. However it happens, that's where we have to go next, is engineering a study.
Is a study necessary for the wastewater plants as well?
For?
For redoing it?
Is there work planned for that, that you would like?
We're looking at changing our system from a bagging system to a belt filter press.
It depends on if you're going to be seeking funding for that. Any funding agency would require a study report. If it's something you're going to do internally, it's your decision as to, you know, what type of technical review you would want on that, whether you felt comfortable making those types of decisions on going, if you would want some expert advice on that.
Well, we're hopefully looking to get grant money for all of these things.
Yeah, that would require a report. That's the first thing.
No, we don't have a money tree in the backyard, maybe forgot to grow it.
That's the first thing most funding agencies will ask, have you gotten a report prepared? Because they want to know that you've looked at all the options, and that you have done some type of budgeting, some type of cost comparison, what is the most affordable, feasible option? So that's one of the first things they'll ask, is if you have a report prepared for that.
And then once you have the report, do you write grants?
A lot of the grants require information directly from you, but we're quite familiar with that, we'll help you prepare it and pull it all together for you.
And is there an additional charge for that as well?
No, because our philosophy is if you don't get funding, then there's not a project, then you don't need an engineer, so, you know, quite often we extend ourselves quite away from these studies just to help the project get started.
If I could add something, I've got some information on a shared services grant that's available through the state. Deadline is early January to apply for this, and this study that Matt is talking about is one of the things that, yes, exactly, that would be covered under that if, you know, we were to be awarded the grant. And if we do it with the town, because the village, everybody needs a tank, we need this, we need that, it would be, and this is something that Senator Little is really pushing, it's had inquiries here in the past, so I think that's something worthwhile looking into to help fund the study that Matt is talking about.
But the study, Mickey, doesn't need to be completed in order to apply for that grant. We just need to all be in agreement that we're going to go in on the shared services and improving the water tower and the quality.
And you have to have more.
No, this will pay, from what I'm reading in there, this will pay for what he's talking about, the $4,500, the seed money to do the study. It won't pay for the project, but it'll pay towards the study of what's needed.
Correct. As long as there's two or more municipalities that come together to investigate this.
And when we went to that meeting, it was almost a member item for certain things, but at this point it would have to be included, where this is strictly a village-town venture here.
Yeah, and just in summary here, so the grants may be used to cover legal and consultant services, feasibility studies and implementation plans, capital improvements, and other necessary expenses.
But I know the deadline is early January, so if we're going to apply for this, I think we have to move.
Right. I know Greg has looked at that, and I've looked at it as well. Hopefully, at the meeting the 21st, we can set a timeline for making sure that is completed by that due date. It doesn't look to be that too complicated, it's just that the main focus is to make sure that there's more than one municipality involved to show an intent to share services.
I think that's where we need these gentlemen, is for the figures. We need the dollar amount, so.
So we do need to start with them and then apply?
I think so.
That's the issue.
Yeah, it appears that there may be funding for this, and this would be a good time to act quickly. Yeah, and in light of, you know, impending wire closure, you know, we need to look at any development that we can bring into the area, is very, very important at this time, and I don't think we should delay.
Matt, is that something that you guys could help us with?
Sure, sure. I do see, but they do ask for a budget summary, total project costs, so you do need to have some identification of project scope and project cost.
Okay, so can you do that in the next two weeks so we can get, meet the deadline?
We'll have to have.
Seriously, I mean, really, that's what we're talking about, right? We've got a deadline coming up, we need figures.
Yes.
Is that something you would be able to accomplish for us?
Yeah, we have a meeting next Wednesday, a joint meeting, I believe.
Right, the 21st.
That hopefully will, helpful is identify the scope at least, of a project you'd be looking to do in conjunction with the town, and from that, I think perhaps we could develop those costs and have that prepared at the time. This is the January 13th deadline, which is about a month from now, so, yeah, it would have to be two to three weeks completed, and of course, we'd want to review it with you before we put the numbers in the application. Yeah, that's possible. We're going to be very rough figures at this point.
I know, that's what's been a long reason we're working with.
But you at least have to have a dollar amount in here.
Right.
We can't just say, we need help about identifying how much you're asking for.
Right.
Figure out how to use it later.
Do you have any other questions? Matt, you go.
What's it going on at Westport?
Great.
Is it all funded?
Projects doing pretty well, we had a schedule, we got about 15% of the water being in the building, the sewer plants moving along, we have scheduled also, like the filtration tanks, the walls are up forward, you know, the back filling and getting sight where, you know, things are going along very well. Been blessed with the weather, it's been, last week we had some frigid days, and this week it's getting colder, and, you know, contractors limited by temperature, and it's equipment operating, that's about the only thing, you know, the man can stay one, we're working both, you know.
Great, I spoke to the total cost of the project.
I'm not too positive in figures myself, but.
There's quite a bit going on there, there's actually four separate general contracts, there's the water plant, the sewer plant, the water distribution lines, and the sewer collection lines, they're all actually four separate G C contracts for that. I'm not certain of the total contract that I know.
Can you put up a new water tower?
I think two, I believe.
Two water towers?
I'm on hand mostly as a onsite representative for the engineer for the mayor's car and for the town, to oversee the work, make sure the contractor's doing the work, coordinating, you know, being there as a liaison for the town.
What's their water source, the lake?
They utilize.
Springs, do we have spring source?
They've got two towers, we only have one.
It can't be that much bigger than what we have here.
It's just a my and all, I mean, I have to get to similar sites communities, so.
Yeah, Westport is not so much bigger.
Right, right.
In fact, I think it's probably smaller.
Could be. Oops, some project.
Anything for your question, thanks, we will review that as soon as we get a chance. Adam Code, enforcement officer's report?
Just an update on a few of the things you had asked me for, where the buildings, the one in the corner of Main and Elm, they removed the back portion of that building.
Thanks.
So that's secure now.
Yeah.
The old patio building, I spoke with them, and they sealed that up. The only one I haven't gotten any contact or any reply from is the corner of Church Street and Main Street, titanium era, so we reset them a certified letter, you know, for a response this time, because they've got a lot of broken windows, and you can get in that building fairly easy. The other issue, I don't know what you want to do with that, Mrs. Weir's place, it's boarded up, secure, there's nobody going in, going out.
What's the next step? I mean, if we go against somebody, they call it a surveyor, it's not a land surveyor, somebody's going to look at it.
Right.
What happens if they determine that the building is unsafe? What happens after that?
Well, they would make a report back to the village what their findings are, either it's safe, unsafe, it should be torn down, it should not be torn down. I mean, I think at this point, all we're asking for is to have the contents, the garbage that was there, we saw this winter, removed, but that's gone through a season, from winter through summer, and it hasn't been as bad as what I originally thought it was going to be. I mean, nobody's complaining about any smells coming from there or anything like this, I mean, God knows what's in that place, but I'm just looking at it as, I think it's going to be very expensive for the village to try and enforce the cleaning of that building. I mean, I'm not the village board here, but if the building is secure, nobody can get in there, or, you know, the local neighborhood kids aren't in there, and it's not a threat, I don't know if it's really worth it, we're after her for this.
What about some of the growing, like, that building, that corner of Elm and Main and H Street, now, that's getting close to where the roof's going to come in on that. Where do we end up with something like that?
Until it actually collapses, there's not a lot in the building code that I can do with it. It's probably not safe, but as long as nobody can get in there, until it collapses, I mean, it's probably a poor choice of words, but until something happens, really, there's nothing that I can really do, because, yes, the roof is sagging, well, maybe it's sagged for 10 years, 20 years, 100 years, or maybe it's going to collapse tomorrow, who knows?
Yeah, it's got a pretty big hole in it, that's why I don't.
On the old Grange Hill, I mean, the one on the corner of Church and Main?
Yeah.
No, Elm and Main.
Elm.
Who's my next of a bridge? Didn't you tear something off?
Oh, that one, I don't know, I'm talking about the other one.
Yeah.
Well, he tore off the back half of that, all the stuff that was falling down, that's all gone, the doors are all sealed, but yes, the roof does have a big hole in it, but as long as no one can get inside of that, if it were to cave in, I mean, he's liable, he's responsible for it, it's not a liability for the village.
Okay.
The liability for the village, I would say, is if we don't keep people from going in there, like, if we don't enforce closing up the buildings, things of that nature. But he has not, actually, I spoke with him again today, so, I mean, I'm happy with what he did, I mean, I'm not happy with the condition the building is in, but that's a different issue, you know, what he considers a good building and what I would consider a good building are two different things.
What about the basement window, like this Weir's house, there's no windows, maybe this guy's screen.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
Right, well.
They're not boarded.
And I guarantee you, the rats wouldn't matter, because I went in that place last night.
There's everything in there.
Well, it's pretty safe, the amount of food and stuff that's in there, it's a breeding room.
Well, I'm not doubting that, all I'm saying is that the doors were shut, you know, we checked, make sure there's no water in there, because if they freeze a meter or something, then it becomes a village problem, and apparently that's been shut off.
Right, but this summer she took the boards off the lower windows.
The basement.
All the hands, it's a chicken wire screen over it, that's not going to stop anybody or anything.
Well, I can, you know, ask them to board it up, you know, to, it should be boarded up for the winter, I mean, if I owned the building, that's what I'd want to do, but I can't say what she's going to want to do.
So we just leave a condemned sign hanging on it until it falls into itself?
Well, the options are, we go the rest of the roof according to the village code, and as Mr. Keeble pointed out, that's going to get expensive for both sides. I just think there are other ways of probably accomplishing the same goals here, but not spending any money.
Mike, do you ever get to talk to her?
Yeah, she came to see me one time, but it wasn't the best of conversations, she was sort of mad at me because I had sent her these letters, and she wasn't going to have anybody tell her what she's going to do with the house, and so on and so forth, so, you know, it stayed there. Mr. LaBelle was doing a lot of work for her, and I've talked to him quite a bit, and he's tried to coax her into doing something with the cleaning, but she won't let anybody go in there and take any of the stuff out, very possessive, you know, one person thinks it's junk, another person doesn't, so it's a hard situation.
Do you think she'd be agreeable with coming and talking with us and then going to board me?
She'd be willing.
Yeah, I don't think she would do that. I think I could probably talk to Mr. LaBelle, he seems to know her fairly well, and probably get him or get her to agree to board it up to sell her windows, you know, we can try this, I mean, there's going to be, for the cats and all, I mean, they shouldn't be feeding those cats outdoors, that's just drawing rats, cats, gunts, you name it, everything else, the whole, anything living in the village is feeding out there.
Who's feeding the cats?
She is.
She is.
There's feral cats in that other building.
She has a big plastic litter pan out there full of food.
How many cats did we have that were destroyed?
I caught three upstairs.
Five, was it three?
Three upstairs, I caught three upstairs.
They all had feline leukemia, they were extremely ill, and it is, it's a breeding ground for the constant infestation of all animals in this village.
That place should have been cleaned out when it was frozen.
It's going to be frozen pretty soon.
Well, open suggestions.
Do you have any other thoughts?
I've tried two or three times with her, with Mr. LaBelle, to force her to clean it out, and it was not successful, I mean, she just flat told me that she's going to get a lawyer and fight it, so, I mean, I really don't know what to do with it, I mean, I'll do whatever you want me to do, but I personally, I don't know what to do with that situation, other than board up the cellar, and I don't believe she's ever going to stop feeding the cats, and I don't believe she's going to ever let anybody come in there to catch the cats and take them to the shelter or wherever. I mean, short of law enforcement getting involved or something like that.
Well, I guess the best thing to do, I guess, at this point, for sure, is to try to get that boarded up, because it is open, I know the cellar window, I've been walked by there, it is open.
Yeah, there's just a thick wire on there, yeah, it's going in and out, we don't doubt about that.
Some don't come out.
Can we go back to the process from the official standpoint of the surveyor, if he comes back and he says it's condemned, what happens after that?
Well, then it would be up to the village, depending on what his findings are, if he decides, and her surveyor decides, that the place should be cleaned out, then there would have to be some sort of court order, you know, we'd have to get up something from the local judge, ordering them to do it, and if they don't do it, then the village would, it would be the village's responsibility either to do it or hire someone to do it, that's where the expense comes in.
But then we can put the expense back on her tax.
Right. You're going to get paid for it, but it could be a while, you know, if you have to go through the whole process of condemning the property and selling it for payment, all this type of stuff.
Well, I just think if we close our eyes to it, we're setting a precedent in the village, which is not a good thing.
That's the only thing.
Unfortunately, you know, I'd like to work with her and do whatever we can to help her along, but she's not looking for the help.
Well, we need to find out what it would cost us to proceed on to this next step before we do something that we might regret, we'll have to find out, or at least do a little investigation here and find out.
Yeah.
Well, I can call Mr. Keeble and ask him, maybe the surveyor, exactly what type of person are we looking for here, an engineer, or just a contractor, or a third uninterested, non-uninterested, but nonpartisan party to it, and depending on what they would charge, I mean, they would go, I would go with them, and probably somebody from the village, I certainly wouldn't go there alone, nor would I want anybody to go alone, because it becomes a he said, she said.
Right.
And she has the right to have someone present at the same time, just to verify, if she should choose, and then based on what that report comes back at, then the next step would be up to the village of what do we want to do, do we want to go and get a court order?
And that wouldn't cost us, because the judge will have the court order without having to.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll move into the public hearing and continue with the meeting after. This is a public hearing to hear input on the proposed village law number two of 2005, which would be to eliminate the village justice position. Open the floor to comments by anyone on that? Nope, there being no comments, that's the goals of public here. And we can vote on that, on new business, the law, or proposed law. Okay, Mickey, do you have anything else?
No, I think I covered everything, other than the Price Chopper's coming along, the strategic lens, they're really moving along.
Have they had a schedule?
I don't know that they're ahead of schedule, but they're doing a lot more, they're farther now than I thought they would be, I mean, just observing. Actually, I'm scheduled to go out to the Price Chopper tomorrow morning, the guy wants to see me there, so.
Now, something going into the Grand Union, have you heard? Because they cleaned that guy out, they're working on Sundays and everything, tearing it down.
Yeah, they had a job just to gut the inside of the building, some issues with the flooring, the tile on there may have been asbestos, so they want to get the building ready for the next tenant, whoever's going to rent it, and I don't know who that's going to be, I haven't heard anything. When they come in, they're going to build it or remodel it to their specs, so basically, it's site ready, you've just got to tell us what you want in it, but I don't know of any store, I haven't heard of anything.
Have you heard of, that Price Chopper's on track for? Have you heard of, that the Price Chopper's on track for April openings still?
No, I'll ask him tomorrow, though.
Okay.
Other than that, there are no other big projects coming to town that I know of. Of course, everybody knows Irving Oil's closed, and Dunkin' Donuts is no longer there. I didn't see no...
They're looking for a place, though, Dunkin' Donuts.
Might lose a few pounds or something.
They're working on a deal to move the levee seven's diner.
Oh, cool.
I hope they'll make me with them.
Wow, we're up and coming.
Okay, well, thanks, Mike. Uh, any other, uh, public comment from, from the village residents? Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's report. I guess, as everybody already knows, we're gonna have a shared services meeting with the town and Village of Rousas Point, December twenty first, and everyone can go to that. It's an open meeting, so we can all go if we want. I'm hoping that we can make some headway there.
Now, will we also definitely be discussing, um, the wastewater, too, as part of the shared service?
Well, at this point, we're focused on the wa, on the water.
Okay.
Uh, we don't wanna bring that up, because that will be a problem for us if we get much bigger. You know, we need to be able to handle the loads that we're gonna be beginning. But for now, we're, we're just trying to get on board with the, with the water right now. But we do wanna proceed with that also. And that'll be brought up there also, I'm sure. Meeting again with the Economic Development Subcommittee tomorrow. Uh, that's for the wire closure. I, I think we made some headway, and there's a lot of people from the state that are trying to help us draw business in here. It's a good time for us to be dealing with these things, and be sharing services, and be able to expand our services. So, I found, I find these to be quite helpful, because, you know, there's a lot of people there that can help us out, that can steer us in the right direction, and hopefully, we'll be able to get some things in here. We do have a lot, some time, so. And we, we got our sander truck from RP, and I wanna thank them for selling us a sander truck. We've had it in service, it's helping us out, and we appreciate that. We, Amy and I met with Terry Dool and Fred Testa from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. They help municipalities with grants, tell you, they, they don't do grants, but they tell you what you need to do to be able to get grants. So, they, they gave us a lot of useful information, and we'll be bringing that to the town with us next week. I wanna remind everybody not to block the sidewalks during the winter months. We have some problems with the sidewalk plow not being able to get through, because people are parked on the sidewalk. We put a notice out, and I just wanna remind everybody again not to do that, because it does keep us, it's very inconvenient, and it keeps us from keeping the sidewalks clear. We also got a, an award from Perma for for getting a score, Lost Control Evaluation Score six hundred and greater for the year two thousand and four. And we got a thank you from the American Waterworks Association for being involved with them. And that's all I have. Now, I have the trustees' report. Trustee Trembley?
Um, the only thing that I have is I did contact Mr. Trey Hand from the town and Mayor Rivers from the Village of Rousas Point regarding the Time Warner cable contract. And Mr. Trey Hand said that they had started working on it quite a while ago, just looking at it, um, and they haven't done much with it lately. Um, they're kinda waiting for the new board to settle in, and we'll pick it up again. And Mr. Rivers said that, you know, they have some different issues with Time Warner right now, um, that are ongoing. But, um, they did both agree that there probably will be a joint meeting at some point where we will all sit down and start working on it, and told them that, uh, when either one of them decides that they wanna get together, that I would be the point of contact for the Village of Champlain. So, hopefully, after the first of the year, then the board gets in, I'll contact them again and see. Start doing some joint work on it.
Thanks, given. Any questions for Kim? Okay, uh, Trustee Martin?
Um, kind of the shared services meeting with, with Steve. Concerns with the town turnover, are, are those going to be addressed this time? Will there be town representatives there who are knowledgeable about what's going on?
At the upcoming meeting?
Yes, on the twenty first?
Yes.
Okay, because we sat there, you know, at the last meeting, I kinda felt that Mr. Barkley...
Yeah, he was in the, in the loop of things, I guess, at the time. But the, the sitting board has been invited to this meeting, plus all the members of the new board, including the alternate that may or may not be elected, however that all shakes out. It's a secret so far. Everybody I could think of, I, I sent a letter to.
See this, I'm gonna copy it. Yes, thank you. You have, all of you have a copy of the Northeastern County Central Schools harassment, anti-harassment policy. Uh, I looked at the village policy, and it's, it's pretty inclusive. I just would like to see us with a signed statement in our hands that the village has provided this information to the employees, and that we have a signed copy from them that they have read and understood the policy. I think that will help us down the road with any future issues dealing with discrimination or dealing with anti-harassment or harassment issues. Just so that we can go back and say, well, we have an understanding that you have read and understand that policy. Right now, we don't have that, I don't think, really.
The harassment policy is included with the personnel policy?
Yes.
Which they do sign off on.
Okay, but I would...
If you want it done separately, we'll have something different, but it is included with personnel policy.
Okay, I, I just would feel from the village's standpoint, from my own standpoint, I just feel that a separate issue, a separate signature on this, on the harassment policy, I think would be of benefit to us. Mr. Mayor, you brought up the sidewalk. We have a sidewalk block. So that we can get the sidewalks clean, and Woody's done, I think he's sure he's done a great job in keeping the sidewalks clean. Is that new machine working out fairly well?
Very well. Very well.
That's helpful, I got, thank you.
Any questions on Greg's report? Now, we'll proceed with Justice Southwick's report.
Just have two things, uh, I wanted to mention about the sidewalk unit. I think it's a great thing that we have that in the village now. It's a lot better than what we used to deal with. And hopefully, we can keep it together and make it last ten years. That would be great. Makes a big difference in my mind to have that, and also the capacity to sand the sidewalks as well. I wanna compliment Woody on finally doing, or shouldn't say it that way, I should say I'm doing something that gets me, gets me off his back, and that's to take care of Mrs. Trembley's siding over here. Thank you very much, Woody, appreciate that. That's really all I have.
Any questions on Steve's report? Well, I just wanna thank Steve and Greg for the work they've done on, so far, on this Shared Services Committee. I know they've spent a lot of time on it and making it also, and just wanna say we appreciate that. That's a lot of hard work that somebody has to do, and I thank you guys for doing that. Okay, uh, Trustee Garrett?
I'm really short today, too. Um, I need to follow an executive session to discuss an employee disciplining action. The lighting contest is going on this week, so everyone have your lights on all week long. It'll be judged through Saturday, so any night the judge, judges could go out and be looking at your house, so be prepared. Uh, and an idea I just wanna throw out, you guys, I'm thinking about possibly pulling together a winter carnival for the Village of Champlain. Um, possibly the week the kids are out of school, just showing in a couple activities. I was thinking of going to the different organizations in town, like the Catholic Daughters and Knights of Columbus, and see if they wanna run an event or something. Just kinda wanna get your thoughts on that. Just wanna do a little bit more with the community. Um, you know, we've got that great rink, and we could do some events down there, do a sculpting contest like they do down in Plattsburgh. It's really fun to do, and I'm sure the guys could bring in some snow for us, for sculpting. Uh, but I went to the sculpting down in Plattsburgh last year, and, uh, all you do is take a block of wood, and you get these things that lows, they range from a dollar up to two dollars, that carve and shake the snow. It's wicked cool to do, it's really simple, and the kids have a great time. And it'd just be something to screw something in front of the ice rink there, we could mound the snow and, um, you know, come up with the different things. So I just kinda wanted to throw that out and see. Not asking for help, just what you think on it, I'll pull it together. If you guys are interested in trying to do something like that, and then, you know, I'll check with the different organizations, too, if they wanna help run some events.
I think it's a great idea. As long as we've got snow to pile up.
Yeah, that is key, that is key. It would be just fun just to try and get some more community events together. It was nice when we had the cookies and the hot chocolate and everything, and, you know, I'd go with donations for that again, and, you know, have a, you know, introduction to the skate rink. Just let everybody know it's still there, and, you know, even bigger and better than last year, and...
Anything we can do for the kids and stuff like that.
Yeah, keepin' busy during that week. It's really tough, you know, I get a little stir-crazy.
It's very good.
Okay. I'll give you details next month as to what I've come up with then. And that's all I have.
Is there any questions for Amy? Uh, if not, we'll, we'll bring up, uh, vote on the executive session, last order of new business, in the meeting. Now, I have a report of the clerk treasurer.
Revenue expenditure reports have been copied for the board. We have three purchase requisitions, one for hydraulic motors of the sander, one for a parasitic pump for the, for sodium illuminate, and one for three computers and one laser printer.
Okay, I'd like to deal with the hydraulic motor and parasitic pump now, and the old computers under new business. We'll, we'll take these both together. The purchase racks are for the hydraulic motor for the sander at a hundred and forty-six oh eight, and parasitic pump, uh, for two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. Uh, we entertain a motion to pay these POs.
Both of them?
Yeah, I'll put them together because...
So...
Unless we have any questions. Second? Second, okay. Mike, is there any discussion on these two items? Uh, if not, uh, proceed to vote. Trustee Trembley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to the presentation of the warrant. Everyone have a chance to look at that. Uh, we entertain a motion to pay the warrant.
So long.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the warrant?
Youth program, two thousand five hundred and ninety, what is that for? What do we get from?
It's during the summer, like the softball and all that, that we do with the town.
Is that coaching and equipment?
Yeah, that we do with the town. That's our share of it.
I think it's an annual payment, that's why it's larger than...
Yeah, yeah, it's just one, so long.
Under, kind of more stock control. When we had the shared services committee, this was one of the topics that was brought up. What do we, uh, what are we getting for our money here? I, I don't know how many calls that we have had for dog control issues here in the village, but I think overall, the town and the Village of Rousas Point, as well as ourselves, we're kinda wondering about this expense. I, I, I guess we can just question it. Can we question that later on, or is that how it went? Is this a budget time issue?
Uh, well, I think it is a budget issue. We have to ask them to give us a quarterly report of what they do, because we're just paying this, we weren't getting a report back, Greg, and you're correct. We, we need to know what we're paying for, are, are we getting our money's worth if we need to do this? You're right, and that, that is another budget item that we will need to be looking at next month.
Have we received any reports from him?
No. Last year, we did, and we have requested quarterly reports. It's always a constant, you got it.
Well, that's, that's something on shared services?
Yeah, that, that was a, a pretty good topic of discussion.
What are the insurance? Just a talking.
Okay, uh... We'll have a roll call, uh, Trustee Trembley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, we'll have, now have the report of the superintendent.
We all have copies of the work report for the last, last month, and then have a few other items to go over if you go through. Any questions for the work report? Uh, work report?
Couple UFDO.
Underground facilities perfection organization. We have to go out and locate our water sewer lines, so other utilities or contractors don't, uh, rip and tear our water sewer pipes.
There was a note here, I didn't understand. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
We, uh, just to highlight a couple things, we received a notice of violation from the health department that we did not do our testing. The, uh, health department did find our, our test results, it was misfiled in their location. We do not have a violation. And then there was some testing that needed to be done with the lead and copper rule for the town and the village. We're currently working on that to get up to speed with the County Health Department for approval of the various test sites in the town and village districts. I also have a water course in Potstam dealing with backflow prevention program. It's being instructed by the New York State Department of Health out of Albany. It's in Potstam. I'd like the board to authorize the expenditure of forty dollars for registration fees for two individuals. It's in Janu, on January tenth in Potstam. We use a village truck to go up there, I just have to send the forty dollars in with the registration for the class. I also have, uh...
Okay, we'll, we'll bring that up under, uh, new business.
I have one other thing to bring up under your new business section. We need to get a new warming light for the pickup truck when we're plowing or, or cleaning when it snowstorms. Uh, a good light is around a hundred and fifteen dollars. Bit of the old light that we can actually see, instead of a small strobe that is barely seen in the daylight hours. Nighttime, it's fine, but daylight hours, nobody pays attention to the strobe. So we get regular rotating light, similar to what's on a lot of the other plow vehicles. Also have some equipment I'd like to be able to put out today with the board permission. There's surplus of a nineteen ninety-two dump truck. It's inspected, it's on the road. It's a good truck for anybody that would need one, but we don't need three dump trucks. We also have a used airflow sander in working condition. We don't really need two Sanders. We would have to have one dump truck free in case we have water breaks or hauling snow, so we can build sculptures.
Okay, we'll bring that up under the business also.
And we also have a nineteen eighty-seven International truck, but I'll forbid for parts only. It's non-inspectable, it's not runnable, not running. It's non-inspectable, it's not runnable, not running.
As is?
As is. But we have to indicate that it's not, not running for parts only when we put it out for bid. Sign up for scrap. Keep the tires off of that thing. We're having problems with our touchpad for reading water meters. I've got a few phone calls out. I've also contacted the manufacturer of the one we have right now.
Isn't that new? Last year?
No, that's about six years old.
What was replaced last year with them?
With who?
The readers, the touchpad things.
No, we replaced the touchpads on the houses, but now our reader for the touchpad is not working.
Oh, okay.
You put a nine volt battery in it and it drains it in the day. We're looking at an expense there in the water budget. I haven't received any pricing back as to even if this one can be repaired or replacement. I'm still sourcing the pipe locator and magnetic locators. I've had one vendor come up with a demonstrator model. It's a nice machine, it has a five-year warranty, but I think we're going to have to budget that in the upcoming budget. We'll have to borrow somebody's or something as we get more UFPOs in the springtime, but we're looking at approximately $2,500 for something that'll work. Do 300 or 400 feet of pipe if we can mark, if we have to mark out that much in that distance. Right now we're only going 10 feet and we lose signals for our current mission. I think that covers it. If there's any questions or concerns.
I have a couple of questions. What do you have? I've had several people ask me about the skating rink. I guess that was quite popular and people are wondering when we're going to do that again.
It's flooded.
It is?
It's flooded. We'll, we'll clear it off tomorrow and see what condition our ice is in.
Oh.
But it is flooded, which we've been flooding it off and out over the past week. Hopefully we have no ear pockets in it where somebody sort of goes skating along and clunk out.
And the other question I had, will you have our first month's data from the border of the Woodline?
It's on the table in the back. I haven't booked it up to download.
We do have a month's work.
We have the machine, we have the machine inside. We just have to download it off the computer, if my computer allowed me to do it.
I might have a few dollars or lose mine. I might bring, I might have to bring it home. Okay, any other questions on your report?
Yeah, what do you, have you been experimenting with one guy in a truck plowing?
Uh, yeah, we're still experimenting on that. We haven't got, right now we're dealing with a new truck. We've already clipped a couple of mailboxes with our new truck. Different distances, different heights of the wing. We're going to, I'm going to make it work. I'd like to try it and see if it will work.
How was out today, you know? And that, you know, on the street. Yeah, yeah, I noticed you're, you're by yourself. I, you know, I'm just concerned about places where there's, you have to turn around by backing up when you're by yourself. I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind. Because I, one of the questions I had in discussion I had today was, well, you know, Ross's Point doesn't, the state does it, you know, why can't we do it? The comeback was that Ross's Point and the state doesn't have dead ends where they have to back up and turn around. Most places they, they have a circle or a turnaround. I'm not saying that I, I agree that that's an issue, but, you know, is the second guy getting out of the truck to make sure there's no one behind him?
No, the second guy just doesn't get out of the truck.
So how is that an advantage to have a second guy in there then? Being out of down street in the rain?
There isn't.
There really isn't any because I, I plowed myself and the second main parasitic gets out of the truck unless you hit a mailbox or a sign pole.
Kind of handy because there's no radio in the truck.
Please refrain from making comments because this part of the meeting is for the board and unless, unless we have a question for somebody who really want to keep things moving along.
So when you get back plowed, there was no, we, very seldom did a shotgun driver of a passenger ever get out of the truck.
Thank you. Is there any other questions on the board's report? Okay, no, we'll move to correspondence. Thank you, Woody, for your report. I just want to make one comment and I'm sure everybody on board wants to say this, that everybody's done a great job keeping the streets clear so far this year and hoping we don't get that big snowstorm, but it's just a matter of time.
Correspondents from New York State DOT regarding the water line under the bridge on Route Nine over the Great Shady River. Correspondents from Ann Derringer regarding unpaid road shoulder which is causing problems at the West Service Road and Locust Street location. Correspondents from Scott Yell regarding the dead trees on the South Street property. Notice violation of Clinton County Health Department to the Village of Champlain. Notice violation of Clinton County Health Department from Clinton County Health Department to the Town of Champlain in a letter from Superintendent Kissel to the Town regarding this issue. Information from Attorney Kiebel regarding local law number two of 2005, local law to abolish the position of village justice. Correspondents from Empire Bootcross regarding the HMO renewal.
Okay, I guess we have everything there covered under new business. Old business, I think we touched on where we're at with trying to obtain a grant. GSA, we're metering that presently. We have the obtained data at this present time. The parks grant, we're going to finish that this summer. Time order, Kim mentioned about, we'll be getting together on that and the village justice position.
Contact the grant writer. Should, should I contact the grant writers to keep calling me and say that we're not interested in them or to keep holding on because they're looking for an answer?
Well, it's difficult at this time because like Bernard Carr said, we don't know what form an improvement to the water system might take if it's water tower, pumps, looping, what they're going to come up with. So it's, it's difficult to have somebody proceed with a grant until we know exactly what we're looking for.
Right, and they said that too.
For, so, I mean, we are making headway now. I think we're moving forward. It's just a matter of time till we find out exactly what we want to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Or what's feasible. I guess I have a question for you, Andy. Is it appropriate this time to vote on that village law to abolish the justice position or should we, should we wait for further comment?
You need to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, you need to pass it tonight that you want to abolish the justice position. The general public has, we have five days, we have to have it posted that we have passed this law. The general public has 30 days to file a petition.
Okay.
And if after 30 days, nobody files a petition, then it becomes a local law.
Okay, well then, we'll act on that. I'll read that. Okay, I'll, I'll read the law first and then we can make a motion. Of the officers and employees law is hereby amended to add the following. It is the intent of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York to abolish and terminate the position of village justice, village justice position pursuant to its authority under the village law section 3-301, 3-302, and 3-303. It is the intent of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain, New York to immediately terminate the village justice position which is due to expire on March 21st, 2006. On April 1st, 2006, the Champlain Village Justice Court would cease to exist. Town courts would adjudicate on, on or after April 1st, 2006, on all matters necessitating the intervention of the local justice court system, both criminal and civil actions originating in the Village of Champlain or adjudicated in the Village of Champlain court system shall be doctative in the Town of Champlain Justice Court. Within five days of the effective date of this local law, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain shall file a copy of such local law with the clerk in the Town of Champlain and with the State Office of Court Administrators. So I would entertain a motion to enact village law two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do we have to do a roll call on this?
I would.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this proposed law?
I think it's worth knowing that we've discovered where we probably saved $12,000 a year.
No, well, it depends. If somebody makes a petition, we go to a public referendum. Is there any further discussion? Trustee John Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Now I move on to computers. So we need at least two quotes. I believe we have two quotes here.
Yeah, I think we have.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, I think it's three.
I reviewed these. I'm sure everyone else has their, as, as with computers, there's lots of differences. Do you have a recommendation, recommendation on either as to which computers you think could be?
Donna and I were discussing it. We thought maybe that we would, if we stayed locally, that with Mike, as Mike does all our, if we have problems, he's over and fixes them.
Okay, which one would that be?
The east side.
The east side.
His price was very comparable.
Are we in the discussion phase here?
Well, I guess we should...
Make a motion.
Make a motion. Well, we can make a motion to go with east side and then if we don't, if we want to change that, then we can after discussion. I guess we should do a motion. We want to make a motion that we purchased the computers from east side. I think it's, I think it's three computers and a laser printer, am I correct?
Correct.
They were all from east side?
Yes.
That's what we're looking at. Okay, is there, is there a motion?
Even.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll move forward to discussion.
Did you, did you get the impression from Mike that it may take more than three hours for the installation and transfer of files?
No. I don't think so.
The only thing I'd like to see is that we could get him to commit to, you know, getting it done.
Maybe he kind of wrote that because then he wouldn't charge us anymore if he did them, you know? If we purchased something something else, then we'd have to pay Mike to, to come over and transfer his files.
Transfer files anyway. The other thing also is we won't have any, some places you get the shipping free, but they all seem to charge you a handling charge from what I can tell. Also, the software package that he quoted was actually a better package than what I had got from the other ones at a better price. I looked at that price for what he quoted on the other ones and they were 100, $250 more for that particular software.
What kind of warranty is he going to offer us?
I think it's a one year, says on there.
One year, all of them. Part and labor on site.
Which is...
On site.
Yeah, yeah. He said that the printer, he quoted three different ones. The, the one where we can connect, the network printer, I think we have an report somewhere saying that we can all connect to the one printer, all three of us.
Oh, nice.
So we can pretty much eliminate three printers if that's where you want to go.
Is that the 299 one or?
The three, I think it's three, was it the last one?
379?
Yeah, 379.
So that would include the new printer we just purchased, eliminating because the checks don't print with this program anymore on that.
We, that printer was never used for that. The one that we just got was for Janus's reports, which was a dot matrix. But the dot matrix that I have was doing checks before, but with our new software for our payroll program, we, it, it won't accommodate dot matrix printer. You have to print it on a laser.
Okay, so then that would be obsolete.
Other than the water sewer billing.
Put it out solid.
No, I have to...
You'd have to have it bought.
No.
What do we need a color printer, laser printer for?
I don't think we have to have one. I mean, not that I can think of.
It's just that the cartridges are more expensive for the color printers than the black and white ones.
Yeah, there isn't going to be a problem with the checks there. They're, they're, they're black and white now.
Just don't put the coloring in.
So, I don't, I don't know. I've never used a laser printer, so I'm not sure. I'm assuming we're going to get a lot more copies with a laser cartridge than there were an ink cartridge, so we'll be replacing ink as well. I'm assuming it's a little more expensive though.
It is.
Yeah, well, the big feature with that is it's not going to, somebody's going to get their check wet and...
Yeah.
Have it melt.
That's important.
Are these 2,000 high computers that he can hear?
Uh, there's the latest version, yeah. I think he's got the XP Professional.
Yeah, that's kind of... I'm using ME. The worst systems that came out.
Well, that's what's probably...
I've got one of those.
Yeah.
Really?
Me.
Oh, my gosh. It works somehow.
Source itself, I didn't have to.
How does this compare price wise to the...
Uh, well, if...
Say England.
Well, his is a little bit more, but again, the, the software package that he's including there is, I didn't have that on the quotes and I didn't have a chance to redo them all, but they're usually around between 300 and 400 dollars with the other companies. So his, his pricing on that software package at 279, I believe is what it was, or 250, was, you know, at least 50, $200 less than...
Yeah, it looks like it's cheaper actually than, actually all the others.
There's no more Microsoft Office in 2003?
I'm not sure on that one. I really don't know, to be honest with you.
Microsoft Office is your software stuff for Excel, Word.
Yeah, I don't think they changed it.
That's the latest and greatest, I think.
Plus, if that one has PowerPoint and Access also.
Well, he's going to be doing PowerPoint presentations for us.
Need a projector.
Yeah. We need to reinforce.
We already discussed that, we're sourcing that now.
You went to school and bring pictures of the snow.
Okay, is Office on there?
Yeah, it's listed over here. Includes Word, Excel, Outlook.
You take our trading for that stuff?
I wrote it in, so it's, you're not going to be...
It is, that suite is very expensive, so I don't understand why. I don't know, you're...
Is it because they have Monopoly?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, okay, well, okay, I'm, I don't know how everybody else is, I'm comfortable with the computers and what, which printer were we talking about here?
Well, it's, we need a laser.
Yes, I know that.
I don't, if we want to do the network... I don't, if we want to do the network, I personally, I think that's a good idea. We have a really, a nice printer and we can all use it. Quality should be much better than what we have now. When we talked to my other colleagues to see how they feel with a network printer, but...
Okay, well, I guess I have the same question as you have. He was like, we need a color printer. I'm not convinced of that, but...
If we ever have to do any graphing and tracking of anything, it's going to be a lot easier to have a colored printer if we start doing charts.
Yeah, especially if you've got the PowerPoint on there.
For printing of charts and for graphing, either whether it be flows and stuff at the wastewater plant, we've done the charts down there using the colored printer. It's a lot easier to follow month by month based on the flows and stuff.
You have to one year in color all the time, so...
You could actually take that cartridge out and put the big black one in, leave it in until you have to do charting.
I have to say I don't agree because the graphs would, you can either fill it in or you can slash it or you can designate graphs using black and white just as well as you can use it for color.
Well, do we still have a colored inkjet printer?
Yes.
So if we had to do something that we needed color, we could probably use that, right?
True.
Yeah, you could do it a second here. Printer?
Second here, printer. Any thought of that one?
Okay. So we're talking East Side, which we said, and we're talking the 299 network-ready laser jet, right?
Black and white laser jet.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? If not, could we do a roll call on these types of items?
Yeah, you should.
Budget items?
Yeah, this money.
Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Now, to deal with the computers, because we have a formula for the Public Works, Water Sewer Department, since they're all used for all of them, we need to do some fund transfers. So I would entertain a motion to transfer from Fund A909 to A1410.2, $1,000. From A909 to A1325.2, $1,000. From F909 to F8310.2, $800. And from G909 to G8110.2, $1,200. So I would entertain a motion to do those transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the transfers? If not, Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're... Would entertain a motion... I guess I have to read this.
Sounds so exciting.
To do a bond anticipation note to pay for the pump for the water system. We have enough money in there to do that, but it would may cut us short for the rest of the year, so we're going to do this bond anticipation note. It has a provision in there we can pay it off if we have the money left at the end of the year.
No charge at the payment?
Right, no penalty. Okay, I guess I have to read... Bond resolution dated December 12, 2005. A resolution authorizing issuance of $7,500 in bonds of the Village of Champlain, County of Clinton, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of a potable water pump in and for said village. Whereas, all conditions precedent to the financing of the capital project hereafter described include compliance with provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act have been reformed, and whereas is now desired to authorize the financing of such capital project, now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Trustees, Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, the village as follows. The purchase of a portable potable water pump in and for the Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, is hereby authorized at a maximum estimated cost of $7,500. It is hereby determined that the plan for financing of a for said maximum estimated cost is by the issuance of $7,500 serial bonds of the village hereby authorized to be issued therefore pursuant to the provisions of the local financing law. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned project or purpose is forty years pursuant to subdivision one, paragraph eight of section 11.00 of the local finance law. It is hereby further determined that the maximum maturity of the bonds herein authorized will not exceed five years. The faith and credit of said Village of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, are hereby irrevocably pledged for the payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds as the same respectively become due and payable. An annual appropriation shall be made in each year sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on such bonds becoming due and payable in such year. To the extent not paid with other monies, there shall annually be levied all the taxable real property of said village a tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on such bonds as they become due and payable. Subject to the provisions of the local finance law and power to authorize the issuance of and to sell bond anticipation notes and anticipation of the issuance and sale of bonds herein authorized, including rules of such notes, is hereby delegated to the village treasurer or the chief fiscal officer. Such notes shall be of terms, form, and contents and shall be sold in a manner as prescribed by said village treasurer consistent with provisions of local finance laws. All other matters except as provided herein relating to such bonds, including determining whether to issue such bonds as a statutory installment bond and all matters related thereto, prescribed herein and the manner of execution of the same, including consolidation with other issues, and also the ability to issue several bonds with substantially level or declining annual debt service, and all matters relating thereto, shall be determined by the village treasurer or the chief fiscal officer of the village. Such bonds shall contain substantially the recital validity clause as provided in section 52.00 of the local finance law and shall otherwise be informed and contain such recitals in addition to those required in section 51.00 of the local finance law as the village treasurer shall determine consistent with the provisions of local finance law. The validity of such bonds and bond anticipation notes may be contested only if such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which said village is not authorized to spend money or the provisions of law which should be complied with at the date of the publication of this resolution are not substantially complied with. In an action suit proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within twenty days after the date of such publication or such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. This resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent for the purposes of Treasury Regulation Section 1.150-2. Other than as specified by this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved allocated on a long-term basis or otherwise set aside with respect to permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. This resolution, which takes effect immediately, shall be published in full and summary and form in the official newspaper said village for the purpose together, for such purpose together with the notice of the village clerk substantially in the form provided in section 8100 of the local finance law. Reading that next time, won't you?
I think so, that's your job.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we have a motion. Is there any further discussion on this?
What is the interest rate? Nowhere in there does it say.
What you do, okay, go ahead, Anita.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
What we do, you have to go to at least four places, ask for the rates, and you take the lowest rate of the places that you're at. Right, am I correct?
Three.
Three, okay, I'm sorry.
Champlain National gave me four and a half percent. TD Bank North was four and a half percent and Key Bank was 3.85.
Okay, we're bound to take the lowest one. And it does have a provision for early payback.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? If not, Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Wait, we didn't have a motion.
We didn't have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, the engineering study, we're going to be taking that up next week, the 21st. So we'll move back to old business.
Can I just say something here? I know it may sound like we've done it, but I know you said that we're going to hold off in discussing the wastewater at the shared service, but if there's a grant available that might cover the cost of doing the engineering on the wastewater, would that not be advantageous to us to go ahead with that as well?
Well, we want to bring that up at the next meeting, but the big thing that's on there right now is the water. We do want to bring that up and continue on with it, yes.
But if we could possibly get that study covered, wouldn't we better opt to do that?
Yes, we should. I didn't mean to imply that we weren't going to bring it up, just that this is the one we had done the most talking about is the water project.
And that would naturally, you know, I'm saying, be part of a joint venture in shared services as long as, you know, dog catching and, you know, any other type of stuff that we could minimize the expense to us as a group. Dog control, excuse me.
And it is only dog. They do not catch any other animal.
Just dogs?
Just dogs. No cats, no raccoons, no skunks. Dogs only.
Okay, and under new business also, I need to make the announcement that Evergreen Bank, which was one of the banks that we approved to do business with, at our organizational meeting, has changed its name to TD Bank North, which is the same name. It's just a different name, so that's also approved bank. Okay. Next thing we have is we have to pick an insurance to go with for this year. The one that seemed to be the consensus of opinion to go with was the Alternative Empire HMO. I guess I would entertain a motion, that would involve an increase of 1.5% over last year versus 12% to stay with the plan that we had previously. So I'd entertain a motion to go with the Alternative Empire HMO?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, any discussion? And if not, we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin? Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Okay, we have had a problem lately with the rates at the bank that we were doing business with. Juanita and Donna came up with some quotes on what we could pay going to a different bank, and I think Juanita has a recommendation there. Do you want to go ahead and explain that to everyone?
In talking with Amy, she, I know it was ongoing with Janet as to bank charges. She has flat out told me that Key Bank does not offer free services anymore. And whatever we have charged so far as to the bank charges for the last two years that's been ongoing, they will not adjust their bank charges at all. So in future, if the rates go down for the savings account, you're not earning interest to cover those service charges, you will be charged. They do not offer free checks, nothing. She, actually, she wasn't very perceptive. So we proceeded to go to Champlain National for quotes and TD Bank North, which we observed to be the better rating. No bank charges, no fees.
No check charges?
No check charges, nothing. Municipality banking is free.
So did you have a recommendation, Juanita, for which bank you wanted to go with?
TD Bank North seemed to be better.
How do you do your deposits right now? Do you physically take them to the bank? How are you going to address that change?
We actually only go to the bank in the busy months, maybe once every, once a week probably. I don't think that's going to be a major problem. I know there's been some talk about direct deposits with your payroll. TD Bank North does do that. They do have online banking, so if we need to transfer funds...
So you don't see that as an issue, then?
No.
How do the other banks compare?
Okay, before we do any more discussion, I guess we should have a motion. I just wanted, with the way the bank she was... Juanita was recommending, okay, I would entertain a motion to switch to TD Bank North?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, now open up the discussion.
What are the differences between Champlain National here, so I'm looking at it real fast, and TD Bank North?
Actually, Champlain National does have a charge. They charge you seven dollars per account.
Plus 30 cents per check.
Plus they charge you, yeah. That's the same thing like Key Bank has. Per item deposit, per item cash.
And Citizens Bank?
Citizens Bank, there was, is it, what was it?
Savings and loan.
Savings and loan, apparently, and we cannot do business with them according to what Mrs. Dawson had told us.
That kind of mirrors down the field, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'm definitely for saving money. I think from what I see here, we had a, we heard substantial service charges for really, for something that we could have gotten for three.
Sorry, just...
Money that we put in there and take out and move around.
And even when you told them that we were going to be potentially moving our business, it didn't matter?
Well, when Janice, after I went to her, you know, and said, you know, how come these charges? Well, when Beth was there, Beth used to obman and we'd take them off. Janice was just going to clear, but then Amy came along and then she didn't do it anymore. For a few months they got done and then after that, when Jean was just banking, just getting up, Janice would go over and talk to her and she'd say, well, I'll see what I can do. So then it comes to the point when I came in and all these charges, and I went over and talked with Amy, and she had spoken to Janice again, and then her reply was, well, why should I do anything if these are going to change? So it seems like it didn't matter whether they had our business or not.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of switching to TD Bank North, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose? All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Something that we need to have done also, that they cued us into with the state, is we need to do an income study. Now, there's a state group that does this for free, we just need to go ahead and turn the wheels to do that. A lot of this funding depends on how the average income of the people, residents, that are being served by this, and the town is, I believe, doing one for South Street right now. I would like to have a motion to go ahead and have RCAP do an income study for Champlain. If you are under a certain amount, you have a chance at these grants, really, if you're over a certain amount, it's almost impossible to get a grant. So I think we're okay here, but we just need to have that study done.
Has it ever been done before?
Uh, yes, I think it was done...
Years ago.
But it has to be done within the last three, eight years, or something like that.
Right, and we're five or something, we're just over the amount in time.
And I think we were just over an amount, so it would probably, if you can't do any worse, we're gonna have a survey, we could do better.
Is this a survey, a telephone thing, a written survey?
I'm not sure how they do it, it's a mailing, I believe, and it's all coded, so it's all confidential. So, say, for example, my home would be coded, you know, so that they know who had, you know, sent them the response, so they can ask them, we really need this response, we need to have a certain number of residents that will respond to this income statement. And then if we reach a certain percentage of low-income families in the village, our point rating goes through the roof, and we're gonna qualify for whatever we want to qualify for. That's what we're hoping to get from this. And there's no charge, we've just gotta talk it up among people, don't be afraid to respond to it, it is completely confidential, you know, put in and go from there.
I thought we need to supply the mailing list.
So I entertain a motion to go ahead and do an RCAP income study?
So moved.
Second?
Sir?
Any discussion?
Well, can I just ask one thing?
Yeah.
When we do this, within the next few years, this community's income level is gonna change probably very drastically. Is there any, I don't know how you would approach that with them, because if you're looking at people's income levels now, and we don't hit a certain level in a year or two from now, we might.
Yeah, well, you can redo these, you know, at another date, but to proceed, we need to do one now.
Is there a fee or anything if you choose to do, if we choose to do it again in, say, two or three years from now?
Not really, it's a state group that does this, so it's paid for by the state.
And we had mentioned that to them, that obviously it's gonna be changing dramatically here soon, even some changes are gonna occur in January.
That's my concern.
The first round, and then the next round will be a couple of years, obviously, away, but we can do it, it's free charge.
Yeah, the next round will be a couple of years away, but...
Oh, it isn't. I thought the next one was in two years.
No.
No.
Okay.
That was my, that was my only concern, was that we could do this again periodically.
Well, and that's what we're doing now, because I think we're a little over on the last one, they said, but, so we can't, we can't do any worse.
Is there a response, I don't know anything about this one.
I don't know what the response was, it was an adequate response, but it didn't, it wasn't the response we needed to, you know, get the better points, and we needed, we were just off like three percent.
Is there anything we can do to increase response?
Rock it up, you know?
Would it be advisable to put a notice in the paper when it comes around?
We probably could do that, couldn't we?
Vicki, huh?
You have to get eighty percent of a response. If you don't, then they're gonna ask the town or the village board to go out, and they're gonna identify the people that didn't answer the questionnaire, and then someone has to go out and physically try to get them to do it, because you have to hit at least an eighty percent response.
Yeah, right, they do a statistically significant survey, it has to have certain elements to be what they consider accurate, and they won't just take, you know, they got ten people, and they're satisfied with that, it's all done in a scientific sample in the main.
So those of you who make a lot of money don't respond. The rest of you fill it out right away.
I think that's why they catch you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Something else I'd like to deal with under new business, this has come up, I think it came up at last meeting, I don't think we've done anything, Woody, I'd like you to investigate the practicality of maybe getting some kind of an economy vehicle. I know, like, we go to Pot Stand, we take the big diesel truck, there's times when they have to go back and forth between the sewer plant, you know, maybe a small used economy vehicle would be a smart thing to have, rather than to do all our, you know, we go to Plattsburgh and get a couple of parts, you know, we're using the truck, we're tying it up, just to see if it's practical, I mean, at this point.
Trade a dump truck for one.
I have one sitting in my driveway.
Yes, darling?
The Caprice is it?
Oh, I'm not, I'll let you check it out about it, but I know there's one at the credit union that'll be coming up the bit, it's a car.
It's a Cavalier.
It's a 2004, it's got thirty-four thousand miles on it.
Yeah, we should be able to pick up something rather cheaply, I mean, not looking at something expensive, just, is there something that we could do, you know, to save a little bit of money on these trips? I mean, the price of gas has backed down a little bit now, but I don't think it's gonna stay down.
And we need to look at what kind, a two-wheel-drive S-ten or Ranger, or something like that, if we had to pick up something large, we could put it in the back.
Yeah, I was thinking of something even like cheaper than that, like, just something to transport people, you know, we have periodically, we have training, Albany.
No more than usual, two people go, usually.
Okay.
So you get away with like a little Toyota, right?
Yes, I'm talking about an S-ten Toyota.
State bid on those, state bid process on them?
Well, I don't have S-tens anymore, the only thing I've seen online right now is the Rangers.
Well, I was kinda looking at something, even, well, anyway, you could come back to us with what you found.
I know, the state bid pricing on these, the vehicles are around ten, ten thousand.
I got a real cheap one in my driveway.
But there's also some things out there for alternative fuel vehicles, and they're encouraging municipalities to purchase them with, and they also subsidize some of the funding for them.
Okay, but I was kinda looking to save money.
Yeah, I know.
But, yeah, well, come back, let us know what you find out, okay? We have these two seminars, I don't know if anybody wants to do anything with them, they're dealing with difficult people and dealing effectively with unacceptable employee behavior, I don't have any interest in that.
Which one you want? I think they oughta send somebody there.
Well, actually, the dealing effectively with unacceptable employee behavior looked like a pretty good one, I think it was two hundred dollars, it's in Burlington, I think they're both in Burlington.
Yeah, they're both in Burlington. How do you communicate with that?
I just recently went to one last Monday, and it was an excellent, earnings were cool.
And that was managing difficult.
Very good.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion to send one to dealing effectively with unacceptable employee behavior seminar?
So moved.
I think it's two hundred dollars. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye, have it. Okay, I entertain this time a motion to surplus the ninety-two truck and the eighty-seven truck for parts. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We got a sander in there too, didn't we?
Yeah, the sander, yeah. The ninety-two truck with the sander, sorry.
Three separate items.
Three separate items, okay, truck, ninety-two truck, and...
The sander?
Well, sander separate, okay. And the eighty-seven truck.
As is. As is, emphasize as is.
Well, we should advertise that.
I suggest that the village reserves the right to reject any bids that are deemed unacceptable, and they put it out for bid.
We can all the points up.
Okay.
It's usually stated, I think, in the bid contract.
I think it's just part of the bidding process. Okay, I entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, and, the final item is to send two men to Pot Stand, or what's that, training week?
Backflow prevention. It's important, we have to have a law on the books by the middle of next year.
Okay, I remember reading about that. Okay, I entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does this get, have contact hours, please?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. The ayes have it. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into recess to discuss a personnel issue.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To go into recess.[1341.82]